They're looking for, this group has been different right here to me.
All right, clerk please call the roll.
Good evening, Mr. Rickaman.
Here.
Mr. McDowell.
Here.
Mr. Duval.
Present.
Mr. Vine. Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mayor Benjamin.
Here.
Thank you.
Reverend McDonald, would you bless us with a prayer?
Creator and merciful Father, we thank you for this day and for all that you've done. Be with us now as this family gathers. Touch and invigorate us with your care. Allow us to be sensitive to each other, and particularly to this, our community of Columbia. We ask it in your name.
Amen.
Mr. Mayor.
Amen.
Could we ask the Reverend to think about the weather on next Monday? And keep that in your prayers?
Well, the only thing about that is that I, sometimes I think I got inside information. And sometimes I don't have it, so. So of course I'll, uh...
I'm counting on you, wingman.
Thank you.
So, okay, if we, um...
I was just gonna say, that was a lighter note, but also just keeping our prayers, our colleagues in Charlottesville, you know, especially Wes Bellamy, Vice Mayor, was a Columbia resident for many years and actually still comes back and does activities here. And so we want to keep them in our thoughts and prayers as well as they deal with everything there.
Amen. How about the Pledge of Allegiance? We have troop 37 here tonight. Some Boy Scouts, you guys, why don't you guys come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Come on.
This troop can tell you all about the eclipse because I talked to them last night.
Get over that side.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all, thank y'all for being here tonight. Hopefully we don't bore you to death, okay? Right here. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda? And if it would, please counsel, let's hold items number 29 and let's hold 34 as well. That's all right, y'all. So the renaming resolution and also the appointment of the planning commission until further discussion. Second? All right, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Yes, we'll move.
All right, move and second, discussion. Move to previous question, clerk call roll.
Mr. Rickaman. Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye. And city manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, we would ask for any public input related to the agenda items as outlined. I always have to ask, Mr. Mayor. Seeing none, we would move that council approve the minutes of June 13, 2017.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to previous question, clerk call roll.
Mr. Rickaman. Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we would ask council to consider the consent agenda items 12 through 21.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move to previous question, clerk call roll.
Mr. Rickaman. Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Item 22, our first presentation is the July 2017 Employee of the Month. Ms. Kimberly Gathers, our Director of Columbia Richland 911 Communications will present Ms. Carrie Tyler, telecommunicator.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and visitors. My name is Jackie Richburg and I am, it gives me great pleasure to present this in the absence of our director, Ms. Gathers, for the July 2017 Employee of the Month. Ms. Carrie Tyler has been employed with 911 since 2013. She has continued to climb the ladder of success. She started as a call taker and she quickly promoted to a telecommunicator. So it's today, she dispatched for three out of the four disciplines. She dispatches for the City of Columbia Police Department, Richland County Sheriff's Department, and Richland County Emergency Medical Services. And she is currently learning our fourth discipline, which is Columbia Fire Services. Ms. Carrie possesses an unselfish, positive attitude, whose action speaks volumes in terms of her promoting constructive growth within the center, which ultimately promotes growth within the City of Columbia. Carrie is an integral part of our training program and is often utilized in the capacity of a shift training officer to help train her fellow employees to be successful and to be independent on their assigned channels. Aside from Carrie's exceptional attendance and low absences and tardies, she's dependable and she's a very hard worker. Those who come in contact with Carrie regard her as humble yet dynamic force. She is truly a team player, one who is friendly, professional, and often volunteers to assist when and where she's needed. Carrie has been internally recognized by Columbia Richland 911, but it was not enough if we did not acknowledge her on a citywide level for she is well-deserving. So it is our privilege and pleasure to announce Carrie Tyler as the July 2017 City of Columbia Employee of the Month.
I want you, you look like you're a lady who likes to shop and
Yeah.
and also put this to get you.
I will, thank you so very much.
Okay, thank you, here. Photo op. Yes, sir. Mayor Benjamin, our next presentation that you will proclaim for Sickle Cell Disease Awareness Month.
We've always been so proud of our relationship and all the great work done by the James R. Clark Sickle Cell Organization. We all know that sickle cells are a group of inherited red blood cell disorders that cause real blood cell, red blood cells to elongate and clog blood vessels. Each year, more than 250,000 babies worldwide are born with sickle cell disease. Approximately one out of every 400 African-American newborns has sickle cell disease and one in 10 African-American carries a sickle cell trait. James R. Clark Memorial Sickle Cell Foundation is doing fantastic work, providing both medical and psychological services through their network to help folks who've been fighting sickle cell. And we wanted to, once again, as we do every year, proclaim September as Sickle Cell Disease Awareness Month. Yvonne, how you there?
Thank you, Mayor. We're doing great tonight, thank you for having us.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, thank y'all for being here. Why don't you introduce yourself? What's your name?
Can't hear you.
People hear your voice, speaking to the microphone.
To the mic.
Sky.
Thank you for being here and thank you for your leadership, all right? All right?
Well, Mayor Benjamin, I just want to thank you and City Council for having us here tonight. As many of you may not know, but Mayor Benjamin and Councilwoman Tamika Devine Isaac also served as past Walk ambassadors. So we're always appreciative, Mayor, of your support and the support of City Council. And as Deputy Director of the James R. Clark Sickle Cell Foundation, I am honored once again to invite the public to our 12th Annual Dr. James R. Clark Sickle Cell Walk. The walk will be held on September 9 at St. Lucy Episcopal Church with onsite registration beginning at 7:30 and opening ceremony beginning at 8 o'clock a.m. This year's special honor will honor our visionary Ms. Peggy Funny Rome, who has had some challenges this past year. We also want to say that our registration is $15 per person and includes a commemorative t-shirt. The walk is held each year to honor children, adults, and families living with sickle cell disease and to raise scholarship funds for students attending college and institutions of higher learning. I would like to introduce our 2017 poster child. She's already said her name, but if she's coming in?
This is Ms. Sky Hayes. She attends Pine Ridge Middle School. Her hobbies include dancing and gymnastics. And we're so proud of she and her mother, Sherrell, who have been faithful to the James R. Clark Foundation. This is an amazing young woman and young lady, and we are looking for great things from her in the future. We know that they're there, and we are looking for great things, and she's just an outstanding young lady. And our 2017 Walk Ambassador this year is Coach Willie Washington of Benedict Athletics. And Coach Washington and his athletic team have been longtime supporters of the James R. Clark Foundation. They have collected and donated toys for our annual give and tree. And each year, they donate game day tickets for Walk and Senators for our registration signups. Coach Washington can be here tonight, but we have two wonderful representatives. We have Ms. Lorraine Dunbar, who is the Athletic Operations Coordinator, and also the Athletic Assistant Director, Ms. Bridget Jones. Would you like to say something for Coach?
Well, I just want to say again that we really appreciate you and the efforts that you have put forth in the community. And Coach Washington sends his regrets. He's had major surgery, but the doctor did release him to take his daughter to Nashville for attending college to get her masters. So he wants to let the council know and this body know that he truly supports the Sickle Cell Foundation. And once again, thank you all so very much. Once again, thank you all so very much.
was doing, Drew, and True the Form, a reflection of their incredible parents.
(applause)
We start seeing Harmony striking out and doing great things. For some of you who may not know, Prudential gives out Spirit of the Community Awards, national awards, and every year, they select 10 young Americans as the nation's top youth volunteers of the year. And this year, they selected Harmony Frederick. It says 11. You still 11, Harmony? Have you had a birthday? Still 11. A fifth grader at Polar Road Elementary School. She's raised money and awareness to fight cancer on her own, and with an organization she started called Pinkalicious. In addition to conducting a drive that collected more than 800 coats to keep those less fortunate warm in the winter, and volunteering at a local nursing home. I will say this, y'all, I have a bit of a personal stake here, because I think probably over the first several years that I was mayor, every, I don't know, every month or a few months or what have you, I'd just get a little note, just a letter, telling me how great a job I'm doing, and how I'm the best mayor in the world, and how she's thinking about me, and you're just, you know, in the world in which we live right now, having just a little bit more love and kindness, and people who think enough to lift each other up, and then to get that from a child, and it shows you, I believe, the true nature of us. We're not born hating each other. We're not born disliking each other. We are, we're made in his image, which means we are loving people, and every single day that I've known this child, she's been a reflection, not just of God's love, grace, and mercy, but of fantastic parents as well, and of she and Anthony both. So I just wanted to take a moment to have Harmony come. Why don't you come, come say a quick word, Harmony, and recognize her incredible accomplishment. Harmony Frederick, everyone.
Thank you, and you can never do enough to volunteer and help other people less fortunate than you, even if it's just helping someone that you don't know, or giving someone a meal off the street. And buy T-shirts off the Facebook page, $15. (laughing).
Would you all mind if we gathered real quick and took a picture with Harmony? I'd like to do that, please.
All right.
Come on, take one. You all know, we believe strongly in investing in young talent. If we're going to be the most talented, educated, entrepreneurial city in America, we have to really continue to invest in recruiting the very best and brightest. And I always say that the class of Mayor's Fellows we have is the best class ever, but I think it actually is, and to all you former Mayor's Fellows in here, get over it. I do believe that this is the, indeed, the finest class that we've had. We've had, I think, maybe 250 students since we've started the program. I just wanted to quickly say something about our fellows who are wrapping up their summer session of donating their time to the people of Columbia to help this city meet our long-term vision and goals for the city. We have Eric Baxley. Eric's a junior at the University of South Carolina, Honors College, majoring in economics and minoring in statistics. We have Josh Katie. Josh is a senior at Lee's McCray College. He's majoring in, keep standing, keep standing, Eric, you're Josh. He's at Lee's McCray. He's majoring in criminal justice, the minor in cycling studies. He's been helped with BPAC, Tamika. Madeline Compton, from Westminster, South Carolina, is a senior at USC. She's a public relations major and also pursuing a cognate in anthropology and sociology. Nathan Connor. Nathan's a senior at USC, majoring in political science and economics, hopes to pursue a career in law and public service later in life. Haley Flower is a sophomore at Clemson University, majoring in political science. Ariana Gore is a senior at the University of South Carolina, majoring in public relations and minoring in social work and political science. Amber Jackson is a junior at the University of South Carolina, pursuing a broadcast journalism degree. Doria Kim, I think Doria's probably gone now, is a senior at USC, pursuing a double major in political science and economics. Henry Ludwig is a sophomore at the University of Michigan, pursuing a degree in political science, and he hopes to attend law school after graduation. Meg McFarland. Meg is a senior at USC, majoring in public relations. Bradley Crawls is a senior at USC, majoring in nursing. After graduating in May, he'll work as a registered nurse at Penn Med Health, Richland. So just wanted to recognize these young people, y'all. How you not on my list? Huh? Huh? Okay. Okay. Is this the best you got? He was on there? Okay. Come and introduce yourself real quick. This is all I have on. Huh? Wait, wait. Thank you, thank you, Jay. And, um, thank you, thank you, Lauren. All right. Thank you, sir. But these, this, I will tell you, this is not only a smart class and active and wanting to do great things, but you guys, I think, gelled better than any class we've had so far, too. They have lots and lots of jokes, y'all. They get along very well, and did great work on behalf of other people of Columbia. So thank y'all so much for being here, all right? All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I might suggest you may want to step out, and we jump to ordinance first reading very quickly, item 28, and get that one done. That one's in Wood Creek. Do you want to skip to that, get that done, and then move through the rest of the agenda items?
No, I'm actually going to step out for the balance of the meeting, and I know Mr. Duval has a motion on accommodations tax surplus funding, and I want to indicate my support of that motion in my absence, so.
And as well as any issues from the work session?
Oh, yes. Yeah, if you want to do it, you better have him do it. Yeah.
Did you like to take those up?
Oh, yeah, we have the memo, don't we?
Yes. Would you like to take those items up?
Yeah, at our work session, we had a presentation by our staff on meeting a number of funding items that I believe there's a motion to indicate support of the entirety of staff recommendations with the addition of an additional $46,000 for senior resources to fund Meals on Wheels. That's a motion.
So move.
Second.
Moving, second, any discussion? Move the previous question, Court Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman? Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor Benjamin. Madam Proton? Mayor Proton?
Yes, ma'am.
We are on item 26, moving into zoning matters, second reading, the zoning map amendment for 2314 Pinehurst Road.
And we just maybe give it an update, because I know we passed it on first reading under the provision that we were to work out the covenants and restrictions. Now, Mr. Strange is here, and he's communicated with all of us that those have been filed, and I know I've seen a copy. I believe he's sent a copy to all members of council. Does anybody have any questions? And Russ, I see you back there. We got your email, and the neighborhood is okay with everything moving forward, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, any?
So move.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded for the approval of number 26. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, oh, Brenda. Oh, okay, because this, well, it's fine. We, come on up, come on up. Sorry to overlook you. At the beginning, when Ms. Wilson says anybody to read on it, because we do the public hearing during first reading, so technically, we don't do a public hearing for this part, so that's why we missed you, but go ahead.
We just wanted to, I just on behalf of the community, thank this council for helping to facilitate this change and getting the covenants that reassures the community, and we wish to thank you for that. And Dr. Oliver wanted to say something, too. But thank you.
I'm here to say the same thing, to thank the council for leadership, for advice, and for support, and to ask one more thing, which is that y'all help to make this project become real, and that you make efforts to guide, to lead, and to support so that it can be done in a hurry.
Thank you, Russ. Ronald?
Good afternoon. I just wanted to say, on behalf of the Pinehurst Neighborhood Association and community, we want to thank y'all for making sure that Two-Narch Development Company kept their promise to Pinehurst, and we're happy for your efforts and your support. Again, we say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, move the previous question.
Thank you. If the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Rickaman? Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Item 27, the South Main Capitol District Plan. Okay.
I move approval.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is, are there any questions or discussion?
Property owners' issues, and made sure that, you know, the process, since a lot of this had stemmed long before January of this year, I appreciate Dan and them setting it up. Had I known John Lumpkin was going to be here, I might have held it another two weeks. But I appreciate y'all taking the time and bringing forth the information.
Thank you.
Let me just, Madam Chair.
Sit down.
Just a rudimentary thanks. I've had an opportunity to look and to look at this particular place, and it looks very promising. Let's move forward, and let's make something happen.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, would you read the roll?
Move the previous question.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Item 28, ordinance's first reading, the Annexation Interim Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, an interim zoning map amendment for the parcels as outlined. Is there a motion?
Move we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is, are there any questions or discussion?
Property owners' issues, and made sure that, you know, the process, since a lot of this had stemmed long before January of this year, I appreciate Dan and them setting it up. Had I known John Lumpkin was going to be here, I might have held it another two weeks. But I appreciate y'all taking the time and bringing forth the information.
Thank you.
Let me just, Madam Chair.
Sit down.
Just a rudimentary thanks. I've had an opportunity to look and to look at this particular place, and it looks very promising. Let's move forward, and let's make something happen.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, would you read the roll?
Move the previous question.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 28, ordinance's first reading, the Annexation Interim Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, an interim zoning map amendment for the parcels as outlined. Is there a motion?
Move we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Holding item 29, Ms. Devine, and moving on to resolution number R. 2017-065, a resolution approving and ratifying mutual aid agreements between the City of Columbia and the City of Columbia Police Department and various law enforcement agencies, and authorizing the City Manager of the City of Columbia and the Chief of Police of the City of Columbia to execute all such agreements. Is there a motion?
Move approval of R. 065.
Is there a second?
So?
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution number R. 2017-078, certifying seven building sites as abandoned buildings pursuant to the South Carolina Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act, Title 12, Chapter 67, Section 1267-100 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, as amended regarding the property located at 2611 Forest Drive in Richland County. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second. I got a question.
Mr. Rickaman?
Yes, sir.
Is this the old Human Affairs group of buildings? And I thought that was sold. Is that not the?
That's been.
Yes.
John, say yes. John, Krista, either one.
Yes, they intend to rehabilitate the buildings, and they're trying to get the tax credits.
Okay, so that's why they need a certification, okay.
From my understanding, they're going for the state income tax credit, not the local property tax.
Right.
Thank you, Krista. No further discussion? If the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Item 32, resolution number R. 2017-081, ratifying an amendment to resolution number R. 2017-069, authorizing notice of 2017 election for mayor and council members from Districts 1, District 4, and one at-large seat to correct the dates for opening and closing the books for filing, and the time for the November 9, 2017 ballot certification hearing. Is there a motion?
So move.
Move approval. It's been properly moved by Mr. McDowell, seconded by Mr. Duval. Any discussion? If not, if the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Item 33, resolution number R. 2017-082, authorizing the City Manager to execute a 911 consolidation agreement extension between the City of Columbia and Richland County. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. If, any discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Moving into other matters, item 35, accommodations tax surplus funding, the Honorable Howery Duval.
Madam Chair, we've discussed this issue for a couple of months now, and I would like to offer a motion that we change the decision of the City Council on the previous meeting to give the Lake Murray Association the $290,000 and split the remaining surplus, 85% to the Convention Center Bureau and 15% to the Lake Murray Association, as we had previously. This allows the CVB to have a $150,000 growth over the three-year period, and it maintains the traditional split of 85-15 on the surplus funds.
Is that a motion? That's been?
Let me ask you a question.
Motion and second?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Originally, we looked at 80-20?
No, we originally put back the $90,000 that had been given to the CVB, and the Lake Murray had been getting $290,000 since 2014, and so we put it back to their original amount, and then the discussion was what to do with the, when we declare a surplus, and we had originally said, give the 100% of that surplus to the CVB. This goes back to the traditional split of 85-15.
All right. Thank you. That's correct.
And so it's been moved and seconded. I will say, last week, when we talked, or last meeting, when we brought this up, I expressed some reluctance. Since then, I know we've heard from the Director at the CVB, and who indicated a great working relationship with Lake Murray, and wanting to support their funding, and so he agreed with this adjustment, and, but he also indicated, and I would like to echo, that I hope that Lake Murray continues to advocate for the CVB over in Lexington as well, because I know that they have a great working relationship, but sometimes I know our counterparts in Lexington haven't always wanted to.
No, ma'am. I don't think so. But I do think I probably should clarify, in your motion on the funding request, you were, your motion, the intent of your motion was to reflect every item in there, to include the external, two external requests?
Correct.
Yes.
As we presented them. I know there was some discussion about how to do that.
As you presented.
Thank you. And that, I'm sorry, because I think one of those items, it wasn't, we were leaving it more to your discretion, how you wanted to do for the CMFA. Was it just the one-time, one-year?
It is a one-time funding, but they will be able to come back next year and get the other two-hundred thousand.
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you. That would be it, Mr. Devine.
That's it from the work session?
Okay.
Okay, are there any referrals or reports from the committees? I think Mr. Rickaman had one.
Yeah, I wanted to see about presenting to the, well, since it's our committee setting forth, for the infrastructure committee to talk about a formal proposal and future way for us to start putting away money for burial of utilities, but also looking at resolutions so that, you know, once utilities are buried, they can't come back above ground unless absolutely necessary. And just try to do what some of our colleagues in the state have done. Also look, you know, at a way to take a portion of permanent financing down the road to put into a pot so that we can start making a difference throughout the city, not just one area. So I'd like to bring that to the committee. I've got a couple example resolutions that I'd like us to look through.
Okay. So it's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to refer that to the environment infrastructure committee. If the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Are there any other committee reports or referrals?
No.
Seeing none? Oh. Mr. McDowell, I mean, Mr. Duval would like to make an announcement about a little event that might be happening in the next few days.
August the twenty-first at two forty-one, we're going to have a total eclipse. Remember to get your certified glasses, the ones that are, that have the ISO, the City of Columbia's are certified and work well. I can't see a thing.
All right. Okay. And so I do have a sign-up sheet. Ms. Donald, she's already spoke. Ms. Baller? Nope, you good? I'm trying to. The mayor accidentally took it with him, so he's texted it to me. I'm trying to get. Sky Hayes, Sky respoke. Cheryl Gilmore, was she with Sky? Cheryl Gilmore. Anthony Taylor? Nope. Oh, that's Ms. Taylor.
He's coming.
Mr. Taylor, come on up.
Are you good folk doing?
Good evening, Mr. Taylor.
I come for the same forum. Think about what resolution y'all came about, about me getting the license. You know, y'all said y'all were giving me a follow-up, so I want to know what the committee had come up with, what y'all, what y'all found solution about changing the ordinance.
Was it referred to committee? Okay. So, Mr. Taylor, that committee has not met yet. Which committee? Was that environment infrastructure? Was that economic development?
Economic development, I tell you.
Economic development. Okay. During the summer, we don't meet quite as much, but that committee has not met yet. So once that committee meets and discusses, have you left your contact information with the city manager? Okay. Yes. We will send you, we will contact you once that committee meets and comes up with a decision.
Last time I was here, this meeting here will be for, the last meeting will be to address the issue about.
No, sir. At the last meeting, we said we were going to refer it to the committee, and the committee hasn't met yet. So the committee hasn't discussed whether or not there warrants a change to the ordinance. So as soon as the committee meets, there's no standing meeting for that committee. So as soon as it meets and discusses it, we'll get back to you on what the decision is.
How long that go, go take in time, period?
Should be within the next month.
Yeah, can we, can we just do a quick survey on committee members and just go ahead and maybe fast-track it?
Fast-track a date?
It is a personal economic impact on him.
If we could do that as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
Not withstanding the thirty-some-odd days, we'd have to wait.
Why don't y'all just meet next week?
Sam, can we do that?
Yes. Yeah, let's look at, let's compare some dates.
So, Mr. Taylor, probably within the next week or so, the committee will meet. But as soon as the committee meets, and we'll make sure you know when the committee meets. So if you'd like to come to the meeting and make your case again, you can do that.
So now, this contact, we're going to get this contact information.
Give it to the clerk?
Myself.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. And then we also had, let's see, the Olivers and Taylors. Douglas O'Flattery? Mr. O'Flattery, come forward.
Good evening. I'd like to speak as it relates to the hearing sign about the Chick-fil-A food cart. Is this appropriate to speak now?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Douglas O'Flattery. I represent the South Carolina Restaurant Lodging Association, and I'm here on behalf of our Main Street members. We are asking council to consider the impact and which commercial food carts might have with respect to those food service operations that currently have significant investments on Main Street. We have concerns with the lack of level playing field that food carts represent, especially those with limited investment. We are in favor of a conservative, balanced, and thoughtful approach to food carts and food trucks on Columbia's main streets, an approach that protects the traditional restaurant while embracing new measures that will complement the metropolitan lifestyle that so many people who are working and living downtown have come to expect and experience and enjoy. We respectfully request that this matter be tabled pending further study and more important public input. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess, just so you, just so you know, Mr. O'Flattery, I think when we briefly discussed this, I think it will be on our agenda for next, is that correct, Ms. Wilson, our next hearing? There will be a public hearing actually on that. So it will not be tabled. I don't want you to think we're tabling it right now. It's already noticed to be on that agenda. So if you want to.
The sign indicates that the hearing was today.
No.
I have a picture of the sign.
I'm sorry about that.
Just so y'all know, I called this number that's on the sign yesterday and spoke to a gentleman, and he told me to come today to speak. So I'll be happy to come back next week.
Well, and you, you don't have to come. It'll be in the next meeting because it'll be an actual, a public hearing on that location. But, well, I mean, we're noting your comments on that. And we, some of us, we've had, well, we noted your comments.
I know.
We noted your comments on that. But, Krista, just to be sure, that's a zoning, would that be part of a zoning public hearing?
It's a business-wise issue. So it's really just a, it's a standard process. You know, it's a, there's a process that an applicant went through. And that would be for us to put it on your agenda.
So it'll be that.
And you all would have the discussion at that time.
So just to be clear, what's the date of the meeting? So that's.
First meeting, I don't know. The first meeting is September.
September fifth. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for being here. And then I think we had the South Main folks. That's all that I have that signed up. Is there anybody else that needed to address council that had not signed up? Seeing none, can I have a non-debatable motion to adjourn?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Moore?
Hi, Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone.